Appropriate to each grant a franchise like our other franchise agreements have, which allow, well, we're just, we're doing the horse-drawn carriage ones. They have, I think, a three-year time or two-year time. And the cable has a year number in it, and that should be probably what is done. But right now, it would be open to interpretation that the whole scheme may expire in about three weeks. And I understand from some of the discussion that's taken place that there's some desire that the number of franchises either be amended, or by reducing it, or expanding it. And that would be something else that could be addressed in that ordinance, if that's what you so desire.
Just so we're aware of all our options, what would happen if we simply allowed it to expire? Would that open up the field that anybody who wanted to could do it? Or would that make it so nobody could do it?
Well, that again is debatable, because we can put restrictions on the use of our equipment that could possibly allow regulations to be saying that you can't have longer tour groups. But then that might be challengeable in a court if we're trying to restrain various groups from using that have legitimate need. So the clear answer is that there is no clear answer to that.
So if we would simply do away with it, that probably would cause more trouble than it would solve?
It could cause, it would cause trouble potentially, but it would also delete a revenue stream that is there at this point, too. Although my understanding is not a real large revenue stream, it is a revenue stream. And it does give the Transit Department information about when these groups are going to be needing trolleys or using trolleys, so that they can make trolleys more readily available, instead of having a large group show up and wanting to all get on a trolley at a particular time and thereby cause congestion and trouble.
Mr. Vito.
A little background on this arrangement. This occurred during a time when the overflow from Branson's group tour business was inundating the city buses. And in an effort to deal with large over-the-road buses traversing Spring Street, the mayor appointed a commission of a number of people in the community. And through nine months of efforts, we came about establishing a franchise of using, well, we went ahead and bought the trams to do that. What that would do, allow the group tour people to continue making a livelihood, but most importantly, would allow groups to traverse the city and see the many things that Eureka Springs have to offer. And hopefully, they would come back with their families or independent. This was at a time when, you know, things were just crazy in Eureka Springs. And it was very important that we did regulate the over-the-road coaches on Spring Street. What you have to ask yourself right now, that we have the opportunity to review this ordinance, is where is that motor coach business today? It has declined exponentially over the course of the last few years, and I don't see any indication that there will be a rebound in the motor coach business. Just as we regulate taxi franchise and establish one taxi franchise, I think we ought to look at how much business there is actually out there, and do we need multiple franchises? Multiple franchises, yes. In the free market, that is generally a good thing. But we've established one taxi franchise, so I would ask the council, because the amount of business has declined to such an extreme extent that we could endanger tour operators by having multiple franchises, yes, competition in a capitalist system is what it's all about, but it could inevitably lead to there being no franchises or people having the ability to make a livelihood off of the limited amount of motor coach tours that are available today. So I think we have an opportunity to look at this ordinance right now and address it in such a manner.
Mr. Penna.
To piggyback along with Mr. Vito's comments, I think we're at a perfect time also. And the discussions that I've had and the research that I've done is that basically the group tour franchise business is nothing right now, because it can't be, because of the timeframe on the operation. So I think it's a perfect time to relook the whole issue and fix some of the errors that we have in our ways and do a, as Mr. Weaver said earlier, instead of just jacking something up, let's do it right. I mean, we've got in here where it's not transferable, and then it says that they are transferable in the same paragraph, those kind of things. I would move that we have a workshop to rework ordinance for Chapter 4.20, group tour franchises, to include as many people as we can for their input. I think this does benefit the city. It's a use without it.
I'll second that before you go any farther, so that it could be, the clerk could record it as a motion.
Thank you.
Maiden seconded. Please take your motion, please, so she can get.
Go the way of a workshop.
Okay. Motion is, motion is to have a workshop on redoing the franchise, group tour, the group tour franchise. There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Could we add a date to that perhaps?
I'll have to wait.
Apologies, I don't know, we're going to be busy with.
We need to have a workshop for our goals and workshop.
Yes. Recognizing Mr. Gunnels.
Question. The question I have is then, what happens since this is up to expire on the 21st of December? Also, my concern about that is that tour groups, of course, are already booking. Again, just addressing, Joe Gunnels, Joe Gunnels Tours. Just a question if the, not if, but the franchise agreement at this time would expire on the 21st of December this year. Point also, this has been renewed, the franchises have been renewed at least three times, I believe through the years, I think this is the fourth time that they've renewed. The wording, you know, maybe you have to go back and look at one of the previous ones. And as Mr. Pownell said, too, they have been, originally it was written to say they were non-transferable. In other words, we couldn't sell them or transfer them to someone else. Then it was changed at the next time that the ordinance was rewritten and approved to where we can. So anyway, my question and concern is, time-wise, for the, because motor coach groups are booking right now, we've already booked several with Transit for the upcoming year. And so we, just for timeliness, wondering when that workshop could be.
Good point. Can we just take the date out?
Mr. Vito.
Well, we're in the unfortunate position tonight that we can't rewrite the ordinance tonight and do anything really with it. I mean, would there be any possibility of a temporary extension, or lay that out for the city attorney?
Mr. Weaver.
You have to change the ordinance.
Since it's established by an ordinance, you would have to pass an ordinance to change And in doing that, you're better off to rework the whole document if you're going to rework the document. But you could pass potentially, I suppose, an ordinance with an emergency clause that removes that one paragraph, but then you would have no expiration date, and you would have the two franchises that are granted would have to agree to it. Otherwise, you're amending the contract with them.
Mr. Bay.
Well, I understand why Mr. Gunnels is concerned about it, but also, it seems to me that unless we do something silly like what Ms. Balance was talking about and not do a franchise at all, I don't think we're going to have to worry about not being able to commit your tours that are going to be here. You obviously have a franchise, and we're going to have probably a franchise. The situation is whether we'll have one or we'll have two, which the other gentleman's here about, and I'm hoping that. The other franchise is, we've already known she's going to give up her franchise as it is, so she obviously hasn't booked anything. So I don't think, you know, if we get this in, we're still going to have to have an emergency clause on the ordinance when we rewrite it. And we still won't be able to have that until January. But I don't think, as far as your concerns about any of the bookings that you have, I don't think that's going to be affected. And I think, I can't guarantee what this guy's going to do, but I'm pretty sure he'll keep the franchise.
Mr. Penna.
Would it be no different than any other pre-existing, I don't want to say pre-existing condition, if he's got 20 tours booked and we change the ordinance, as long as he still qualifies for, because I don't see that many major changes, it would be one of those, he was already doing it whenever he booked them, as of that date, just like we did in the non-conforming addresses that they were operating as such. He was operating under a franchise agreement with the city when he booked those tours. Allow those tours to be honored under that franchise agreement.
Mr. Weaver.
You could allow them, but I don't know that they would be allowed as a matter of law. And I caution, considering to tell him that he can potentially book with continuity, because it could be that when a new ordinance is drafted, if you restrict it to one franchise, or even if you leave it at 20 franchises, he may not get one of the franchises. Not, put him in a bad perspective, but he is telling you he needs to know. And so you'd probably need to take that to heart, that the quicker you can do this, the more sure footing you're putting him on, so he knows, and the other gentleman knows, whether they're going to be able to operate this in the manner that they're looking at. So I know you're pressed for time, but unfortunately, the ordinance is pressing you even more. You really need to do something quick.
Mr. Raphael, you had your hand up.
We can't really end a franchise, can we? Except through non-use or misuse.
I understand.
Unless he misuses it at some point between now and when we get to it, we can't really handle it. He has the franchise.
No.
As of December 21st, somebody does.
Not as of the expiration date, at least arguably not as of this expiration date in about three weeks. There will be none at that point.
When's your first tour, good report? I believe, I know early April, I'm thinking it might be in March, but, I'm sorry.
I think we have plenty of time then. We got to postpone after January, and we can't do a single thing here today.
Mr. Penna.
His point is, you know, common business sense, you know, he can't sit back and wait I don't know how we got ourselves in a position where we've got an ordinance with an expiration date of December 21st, and we're considering it for the first time on the 1st of December. But I don't envy the position that he or anyone else who is in this fray to say, go ahead and book them and hope that everything happens right. And yet, at the same time, we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot business-wise for Eureka Springs overall if we don't have something that allows us to continue until we can fix this December 21st, 2011 date.
Well, I just want to bring to, you know, attention to everyone, I know that James is probably, probably remembers this, because he and I both served on that committee that he referred to earlier. But the, I think it's important for all of the council to understand this point, is that the franchises that were given, that was set up, as James said earlier, was because of the amount of motor coach traffic going through the historic loop. So if we get rid of the franchise altogether, then there is another, I'm not, I guess, an ordinance or a law that restricts large vehicles in the historic district. So if we do away with the franchise and do away with the trams that was purchased to accommodate the groups, the motor coach groups, then what we will send a message out to, and I can tell you that in the motor coach business that it goes viral very quickly, is that Eureka Springs no longer allows motor coaches at all. Yes, they used to do tram tours, now they allow, they don't have the tram tours, and motor coaches can no longer, they cannot, still cannot go on the historic loop. So group tour passengers have no way of receiving a local tour of Eureka Springs. And one might wonder, well, why don't you buy your own bus and do your own tours? Because, to do that, because of the other ordinance, the other, the large vehicle, I'm not sure of the title of it, but because of that, it is a length restriction to, I believe, 30 feet. So you would have to have a vehicle 30 feet long that would accommodate up to 57 people that rides on, potentially, motor coaches, the largest one I know of, other than an articulated one, which is like an extended one, but the larger ones now are 57 passenger. You couldn't get 57 passengers in a 30-foot or shorter vehicle. One trolley can't accommodate a group. So I'm just, you know, my letter that I've given each member, just ask you to read that and consider that in your decision, and, you know, just expedite a decision, so.
Trephill, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, it seems like we're only discussing a couple of issues here. The transferable, non-transferable, and the limit on franchises. Couldn't we have the ordinance written up, have a meeting, and just figure out those two issues and be done with it?
I believe there's another couple of issues in this ordinance that Smitty addressed in an email, I believe, to Ann. One was the percentages, he asked him some concerns over the percentages. Yes, sir.
For the sake of Eureka Springs business, whether it's tour business, retail business, whatever the case might be, I don't know if we can do it, but I would like to know if we could take and do a one-line ordinance that basically deletes the duration, paragraph 4.20.04, and have the city attorney write it, take a break and come back and read it and put an emergency clause in it and continue doing business. To be fair to everyone, instead of just throwing everybody's business up in the air, including Eureka Springs, because that's what's going to happen if we delay this. And I think it'd be fair to anybody that's wanting to either apply for a franchise or continue a franchise.
Smitty, chime in on this one.
Let me address the expiration, Kansas Transit Director. Reading through Lamont's notes on the last time this was put in, one of his concerns was the life expectancy of our trams. They're 17 or 16 years old now. One tram does not function. It's going to cost $13,000 for the part to fix it. We don't believe it's worth fixing. That was Lamont's concern, was if we went past this date, what shape are the trams going to be in? Two of them work fine. I have mechanics babying them, so they will stay working. But that was Lamont's concern, was will these trams last? And these are city-purchased vehicles. We cannot use federal funds to buy sightseeing equipment. So there's another concern that comes up.
I can make a final comment now, Sid.
Okay, go ahead.
My final, really, my final comment for this meeting at least, is just, not just in question about renewing it, because quite honestly, I didn't even know that was going to be an issue. Hasn't been at any of the other times that the franchises have renewed, so I wasn't expecting that. So that was not addressed in my letter as an original concern. What my letter expresses is this concern. The fact is, the numbers that created this need for franchises to be issued and trams to be purchased and used was based on numbers that I reflect in my letter in 1993, before the trams were purchased, before it was even thought of. But our company, Joe Gunnels Tours, did 1,100 tours in one year in Eureka Springs. Last year, and I have the numbers and they're verified, where you can verify them with Transit, but according to Sandra Torcia, who is not going to renew her franchise request, and my groups for one year this year, did a total of less than, or right around, but I believe, less than 80 groups for the entire year. We did 1,100 tours, just my company, in 1993. So this is, you know, as I've addressed, it's not about selfishness, it's not about greed, it's about survival. There's not enough motor coach business to support two franchises. No offense, I've never met Mr. Varner, nothing personal to him or anyone else. The facts just bear out that the system just can't, you know, it can't support two different tour franchises. And I just ask, that's, I appreciate you giving me the time to do that. That's just my request for consideration. And if there's another meeting, we'll attend, of course.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Mr. Penna.
I think the other gentleman is trying to get your attention.
Yes, come on, we'll give you your turn at the mic.
I'll take just a moment of your time. I've been working, of course, I told you briefly, I've done motor coach tours, and so I take coaches, take folks all across the U.S. And I was shocked at how many people didn't know about Eureka Springs. So a series of events happened, and I started marketing. I've got several groups scheduled for next year. Here's some of the marketing materials. My niche is, in the group tours, is churches and church groups, and larger churches, and residual, bringing them back. I won't bore you with all the details. But the bottom line is, there is no, I don't see that it being like it was back in the 80s, when I was a little boy running through here bumper to bumper. I hope it is someday, but that's not what I'm trying to communicate. I'm trying to communicate that there is tremendous capacity for growth in the group sales. Because I'm on the other side, I talk with the guys putting these things together, and started marketing with churches and other group leaders. And the point I want to bullet point it to you is, there is, there's potential there. This thing is cycling. I know it's been, I don't need to preach to anybody what the economy's been like, but everything cycles. I'm seeing interest. We're doing things a little different, marketing a little different, doing some characters and mixing it up a little bit, and it appears, I say this very humbly, to be kind of catching on. So I, I just, I just see the upside. No, I don't think it'll be bumper to bumper, 500 coaches a year thing, but there is growth there and there's capacity there. And we've been working at it for, again, I say, two years. And I've got several groups lined up for next year. So, but anyhow, I just, just want the group to keep that into consideration, that this isn't, we're not spiraling down, it, we're, it's not that. Eureka Springs has too much to offer. I take too many groups to too many places across this United States that doesn't have near the character and the charm and the uniqueness as to what this place has, so, and it's got a lot to offer. So I think with some work, I think that making memories can benefit Eureka Springs. Bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vito.
Well, I see, you know, I see hand in glove here. I see a gentleman who's approaching the council, willing to market Eureka Springs with his group tour business, just off the top of my head. You set up a package deal, it's Branson-Eureka Springs, you plug into the system that we have in place in Eureka, which is a component of your group tour business, which is a step on guided tour of Eureka Springs. I'm shocked by the numbers. 1,180 in the course of 15 years? I mean, you know, I go back to the taxi franchise, you know, why don't we have multiple taxi franchises? Because is there enough business for multiple taxi franchises in the community? Based on the numbers, and I have no reason to doubt Mr. Gunnels, bringing in another tour is, you know, could jeopardize both of them. The gentleman has other ways of addressing group tour. The unfortunate thing we're facing tonight is, everybody's going to have to take their chances on what this council does, and government moves slowly, and, you know, maybe we need to enact some type of a system that, you know, six months out, these things come up on the computer, they're flagged, and, you know, we know when the franchises are going to expire. But we find ourselves in this situation right now. I see one of two options. We have a temporary extension of 90 days of the ordinance with all the warts and bumps it's got on it right now, or we let the ordinance expire because we can't move this quickly, that's just the way government operates, and we address this ordinance in a workshop. So I see one of two options. We temporarily extend a somewhat flawed ordinance, or we let the one expire we have, and everybody takes their chances and hopes that the city council can get it right.
I'm going to take you to rework the...
To rework the whole ordinance?
Yeah.
Depending on what changes were proposed, it could be ready in a matter of a couple of days.
Okay. We can have a special meeting take care of it. There's always that option.
Yeah. I mean, if he can get it together and we get notified, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If we have, you know.
Is that a meeting December 6? I mean, the ordinance by the 15th, it should have it ready.
Is that doable?
You're going to have a workshop on the 6, and then...
By 15, that should be timed with the 15th, they have it ready.
I have no problem with that.
Mr. Penna.
Was that a motion, or are we still, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Most of them, Mr. Weaver, rework the ordinance in lieu of the workshop or in conjunction with the workshop?
I'd say in conjunction with the workshop.
It's got to be reworked.
Well, yeah.
Do the workshop. My rather is, do the workshop and then give me a week to, before you have your special meeting.
6 of December. December 6.
5:30.
That's a short time, yeah. Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this?
Question. Could we still not delete 4.20.04 and continue on and pass it tonight, or at least address it tonight, and...
In doing so, you would create headaches for yourself if you then wanted to make actual changes to the document. And potentially, you would have to have agreement of both current franchises, or else you would be changing the terms of their contract. So I would suggest not.
If we can get it reworked, redone, have the special meeting, it should be back in order before the 21st, which is the deadline, apparently, by ordinance. So I think that's, that's the game, that's the ballgame. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Thank you, Joe.
Concerns, either of you has to have a conservative opinion.
We'll, we'll let the traffic clear out a little bit before we try and break, till we can hear. It's not adjourned. We're not even close.
We're not?
No, we're not. We got free parking talking about.
We're kinda close.
Well, yeah. We, we have a few things to take care of. Let's go. Free parking in December. Okay. Made in second, it's always open. Mr. Pennell.
I make a motion, we take last year's resolution, change the dates that correspond with what would be, I believe the city attorneys already started working on it. And if we need to take a break so we can make sure we get it right, so that if not, you know, we might as well forget free parking.
I don't necessarily need a moment. I think what, since your procedure now in resolutions is to read them before you approve them, that I've marked through this one since we've been sitting here, and this one could be read, and then you can see if you, if you miss anything and make the changes you need to.
You just said what I wanted to do. Make a motion that we read.
You've got a motion, I have a second.
Okay.
I withdraw my second.
Reason a motion withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now we state another motion.
I make...
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we read the proposed resolution.
Second.
For the purposes of discussion.
For the purposes of discussion, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution removing the requirement of paying the parking meters on Spring Street and Main Street, and establishing free parking on Spring Street and Main Street from December one to December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, in an effort to promote business for the city during the period of December one to December thirty-first of two thousand and eleven, desires to establish free two-hour parking on Spring Street and Main Street during the period of December one to December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the requirement that a person desiring to park at a metered space on Spring Street and Main Street, or, should be or, or Main Street in Eureka Springs is relaxed during the period of December one to December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven. Section two, free parking, free two-hour parking is established at all city-owned metered spaces on Spring Street and Main Street in Eureka Springs during the period of December one to December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald should read free parking.
All day.
I think it's all, yeah. All day for that period of time. Mr. Balance.
Just real quickly, where it says two-hour parking during, in the whereas, and two-hour parking down here in section two should be hyphenated. City-owned should be hyphenated. Okay, section one, the requirement that a person desiring to park at a metered space on Spring Street or Main Street in Eureka Springs is relaxed during the period of December one to December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. That doesn't make sense. The requirement that a person desiring to park at a metered space on Spring Street or Main Street is relaxed. How about the requirement that a person desiring to park at a metered space on Spring Street or Main Street in Eureka Springs and must pay? How can we say that? The requirement, that says that a person must be relaxed.
The requirement is that you pay.
Okay, so it says...
And that's being relaxed.
Did you get...
May I have permission to speak?
Yes, sir, you may now.
What I just said.
Yes. Permission to speak, please.
Yes, ma'am.
It still says. How about the requirement that a person desiring to park at a metered space must pay? The requirement that a person desiring to park at a metered space, space on Spring Street or Main Street in Eureka Springs must pay is relaxed. The requirement that a person desiring to park is relaxed. The requirement that a person desiring to, to park is relaxed. You gotta have a must pay or something in there, 'cause that doesn't make sense.
This resolution's been going through for at least three to four years without a problem. So I don't see a problem with us going ahead, assigning a number and passing it down.
Well, it's silly.
We're in discussion, we're, we're still in discussion.
Okay. I'm trying to get to everybody. Go ahead, keep...
I know this is gonna be even sillier. If somebody got a parking ticket today, they aren't gonna have to pay it. And we didn't have this resolution passed, I recommend we change it to the second of December in all, all places.
Is that a motion? Amendment?
Just, it was, that's why we have discussion, correct things that we feel like needs to be changed.
That's a good point, sir.
All in favor, say aye, yes.
Aye.
Did he have us, what, was that a motion? Was there a second? What did we just vote on?
Changing it like I said, to the second.
Okay, was it a second?
Yes, there was a second.
Excellent.
I think Doug seconded that one. Yes, sir.
I move we sign a number and read the resol, or pass the resolution as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
May I direct a question to the secretary?
Yes, you may.
Sir, does section one make sense to you?
I understand what your point is, but as was pointed out by one of the other aldermen, I think that it's been commonly explained and commonly carried out for the past several years with this same wording.
So something that was sucky then and still sucky now, we still, it's okay? That sucks? Okay, thank you.
If council wants to change it, it's changeable.
Now, I think, I think we got to where we wanted to be. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just give it a number.
Resolution number is five nine zero.
Okay. This is read for discussion. Standing. Is that correct? That was the motion?
And read as amended.
Read as amended, okay.
Prove as amended, which we did.
Thank you, I heard it as read, I'll change it.
I heard it as amended.
You did change it, or made it to resolved, or...
All right.
Should be...
Didn't it read?
Should be ready to go.
Uh, next is agenda setting, for next time. In your packets, you should have a, let me get to it here. You should have a correspondence from Doug Milligan with a copy of a police office report, a couple of estimates from Lewis Collision Center. Basically what happened is, this car was parked in the parking lot by the auditorium on the day that we incurred forty-five, fifty mile an hour winds. One of the signs blew over into the car and according to the estimates, cost six hundred and some odd dollars worth of damage. I told Mr. Milligan that I would present this to the council for submission to the next agenda due to the fact that he has to take off work to come over here to present it himself. So I do have a CD with pictures on it. They're not great, but they're indicative of his paint being scratched and his tail light being scratched too. So move to put it on the next agenda for discussion.
Second. Or I'll move that, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, made in second. All right. Anything else on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Need to throw in another one, but we need a workshop for council goals for two thousand and twelve. I'd like to propose we have it sometime this year, behind all the others.
Sorry, workshop.
For, for finalizing the council goals for two thousand and twelve. And could we possibly get a list of currently set up workshops and fit it in somewhere that's where it works for everybody? Because the last time we threw out a date and we discussed it, cleared down to the time and everybody agreed, and half of us were here and half of us weren't, so if...
Okay, then you also have to throw in the fact you're gonna be having budget meetings too. Since everybody has the budget with them now.
Which we're getting today, right?
You have it. Mr. DeVito.
And I, you know, I apologize for the...
She was in your box.
Missing the city council goals workshop. I drove up and I didn't see any lights on. I tried to call Mr. Pennell, tried to call his wife, I didn't get an answer. And tried to call another member.
We were sitting on the floor out of here.
And so I figured that there wasn't a meeting, so I left.
That's okay.
Anyway, can we not defer this until January for a goal?
Motion made in second.
We've got budget meetings going on.
Till January.
Yeah. I know it's an important object, but I think January would be a fine time to do.
Pick the fine time to leave me, we'll see.
Made in second, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Is that the first meeting or the second meeting?
We can talk about the first meeting, setting up the workshop.
Looking for the budget.
I'm sorry? Yeah. Somebody, Mr. DeVito, do you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, Mr. Berry.
I did. I sent memo out a month or two ago. I'd like for us to see if we can talk about changing our meeting dates for next year from the first and third Thursday to either the second and fourth Thursday or the first Monday or something. I've got a conflict, I'm gonna be just...
Second.
Part of my meeting, so I should like to bring that up.
This for discussion? Meeting changed in January? Mr. Pennell.
It's gonna sound ridiculous. I move we suspend the rules and set the meetings for two thousand and twelve for the second, third, thir, second and fourth Thursdays of the month.
We do that in January?
Well, we're gonna do, you're gonna wait until he misses the first meeting?
No, I'll make the first meeting. It's the second meeting, I've got the conflict the fourth.
Okay, so for this discussion in January on meeting changes, second.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I thought we needed...
Second and fourth? Okay. Mr. Who seconded that one? Mr. DeVito? Any further? Okay, no further on the agenda. I think I've got everything that I needed to, to, okay. Next into city council comments.
Mr. Mayor, you gotta set up budget workshop.
Y'all need to set them up.
Do we have the budget?
I don't have it.
We have a date.
Yeah, everybody, everybody has a budget. But, by the first of December, like I was supposed to have.
Oh, okay. Requested two thousand and twelve, I understand that.
I did not see that.
Okay. We made sure that everybody had the budget today. These, Lonnie and, and Yvonne busted home and get this thing done. Okay. Okay, y'all pick a date. I'll tell you what we can do right now. We can go ahead and find out where all the other workshops are at, then we can send out email to everybody proposing a budget workshop dates. How about that? That work?
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Can we make sure that somebody has a key to whatever room we need to have the meeting in?
That'd be nice.
Because my workshop was not very comfortable, sitting on the floor.
Okay, yeah, we'll take care of that.
Probably didn't have very good lighting either.
Okay.
It's one of those things that happens.
Any further? If not, we're through with agenda setting. Go into council comments. Mr. Pennell, kick it off.
I just, one thing. Do we, did we get the results from the roof repairs that we didn't know that was put out for bids? I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hopefully we can do a better job supporting the city in two thousand and twelve.
I didn't get a chance to answer your question.
You can answer, Mr. Pennell. It's been tough, but we shall survive. Thank you.
Mr. Berry.
No comments. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. DeVito.
Holiday greetings to everybody and best wishes for next year.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes, I'd like you to introduce our new planning director.
Yes, sir. I was gonna do that under my comments.
Okay, baby.
Thank you, sir.
Move along.
Doc?
Everybody have a nice holiday.
Mr. Balance.
Happy holidays.
Okay. Undermine. Lonnie, would you step up here and we're about to recognize you. Ladies and gen, ladies and gentlemen, this is Mr. Lonnie Clark, Berryville. He's a certified CPA. He's been on board with us for about a month. And he's the gentleman that, that helped put Yvonne, and Yvonne helped him in a dual effort to get this budget out in time on the date. And if you have any questions, you can ask him now, 'cause he said he'd answer anything you ask. This is your shot at him.
Can we read it first?
No, yeah, let's do that.
No, don't, don't read it first.
Yeah.
No, it was, it was, for me at least, quite an effort to get it put together. I really feel pretty good about it. And I will be available, of course, to answer any of your questions at any time when everybody knows where my office is, so have questions, let me know.
Is there anybody that hasn't come in and met Lonnie yet? Or didn't know him before? Okay.
I know he reports somewhere.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Lonnie, appreciate it. I believe we've got a gem here, so we'll hang on to him. Under my comments, let me start by saying, first, Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody. The second thing is, we did get Ms. Balance's yield signed at the bottom, bottom of Douglas. It was a concerted effort there. Secondly, we will start working on sewer lines and water lines all around town. We'll try to get the locations out over the, the public announcement system, maybe on the channel twenty-one sometimes. I forget what the channel is, 'cause I hardly ever watch it, 'cause I'm always here on it. We are getting ready to start handing out flyers for the public plunge, January. And we encourage everybody in the city to come out and jump in the water with the rest of us, 'cause it's, it's really cool, basically.
No pun intended.
No, okay, it's, it's cold, yeah. It's really cold. But it's a great cause, I think last year we raised a total of about sixty-five hundred dollars, all-inclusive. About thirty-five hundred dollars from just the jump itself, but...
Is Diane jumping again?
Yes, she is. And we challenge everybody. It's a challenge now to come out and jump in, so. In answer to Mr. Pennell's inquiry, we did open bids for the roof repairs on Public Works and I believe it was the fire station. They are mulling it over right now, both, both department and heads. And we haven't made a decision yet. We're still working on some finite details about what's going on with it. That answer your question, sir? I don't think I've got anything else.
Second.
Made in second, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Outstanding.